Good evening. And welcome to the July 14th Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. If you would please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you can see there, we're missing a Commissioner tonight. Commissioner Reubotum is actually watching her daughter's softball game. Her daughter is representing Dare County in the All-Star. They're at a state championship now. They've made it to the state level, so we certainly wish them well and understand why she's not here. And before we move forward with our agenda, if you'll join me for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. First up this evening, we have the Agenda approval. Is there a motion this evening?
I'd like to make a motion for the Board of Commissioners to approve the Agenda for the July 14th meeting with the removal of New Business Item Number Two, Eddie Goodrich, and in the addition of New Business Item Number Four, recommended amendment to Chapter 113, General Offenses Seaside Regulations, to create a new section, Section 113.29, Beach Equipment, to prevent obstruction of Ocean Rescue Division line of sight on ocean beaches.
A second.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion? All those in favor, please sign up saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Since this is a revision, Meredith's gotten it up in front of you now.
I don't have the revised.
Okay, the revised isn't... There were copies in the back, though, if anyone needs a revised Agenda.
They're at the seats.
Or they're in the seats. So whichever, you can get to quickest. Okay. We'll move on. We do have one public hearing this evening, and I will turn it over to our attorney to conduct the public hearing.
Right. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on a proposed amendment to Chapter 153, zoning, Section 153.073-K landscaping requirements maintenance to provide long-term buffer protection to property owners adjacent to commercial establishments. The rules of the public hearing are that we limit your comments to three minutes, and if you represent a group, to limit your comments to five minutes. Has anyone signed up for the public hearing, to speak at the public hearing?
Al, you want to speak, public comment, not public hearing, is that correct?
All right. Does anyone wish to speak at this public hearing on this matter before the Board? Are you gonna present anything, Mayor, that's ever...
Yes, sir. This is a change to the landscaping ordinance to provide long-term protection to property owners adjacent to commercial establishments. It will require owners and operators who elect to remove required vegetative buffer, which is greater than three years of maturity, to replace the buffer with the required six-foot tall buffer, or use other options for buffering between incompatible uses.
All right. Does anyone want to address this? All right. There seems to be no public comment.
Any questions or comments from the Board? Okay. There's no comments or discussion, then a motion would be in order.
I make a motion that we approve the proposed amendment to Chapter 153 zoning, Section 153.073-K landscaping requirements, maintenance to provide long-term buffer protection to property owners adjacent to commercial establishments.
A second.
Any discussion? Yes. Do you mind adding that consistency statement?
No. And that it is consistent with all comprehensive plans and other official adopted plans of the town of Kill Devil Hills that are applicable. The amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it provides long-term buffer protection to property owners adjacent to commercial establishments.
And is your second?
Yeah.
With the consistency? Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please sign up saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Steve, I'll move into public comment. Is that okay? Okay. All right. We'll move now into the public comment. This is the first time set aside this evening for public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone with us this evening who wishes to address the Board on any item, to come to the podium there. When you do, if you'll identify yourself by name and address, we do ask if you are speaking as an individual to limit your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, if you'll limit those comments to five minutes. We did have a sign-up sheet, and Al, we'll have you go first. And then Eddie, I'm sorry, I know you jumped up, but if you don't mind...
Eddie can do it.
You're gonna pass it to Eddie? Okay, so we'll go Eddie and then Al. Welcome, Eddie.
My name's Eddie Goodrich, and I'm owner and operator and manager of the wastewater treatment plant in Kill Devil Hills, and I wanted to give you an update in regards to the cover that we have proposed to go over the equalization tank. I spoke to Gate Precast Concrete today, and they... These guys built shopping centers and parking decks and just huge buildings, but they will work the... This is small for them, but they can work it in, and he said he could have the materials necessary by the late... Late in August. And, you know, we could go out and build something out of wood that would serve the purpose, but it wouldn't last. So we just wanna do it right, rather than do something that just doesn't... We wanna do something that's permanent, that we won't have to worry about again. So that's the update, and I'm sure they'll do exactly what they said.
Great. Thank you.
If there's anything else, I just thought I'd mention that, so you would know what's going on.
Yeah, that's what we've been looking for. I think timing is good.
We could do it faster, but it would...
Like you said, yeah.
...be something that's good.
Yeah.
Quite frankly, everything's okay out there according to the people from Division of Water Policy and Water Resources, so we just wanna do it right, rather than... We don't wanna have to do it again. So other than that, that's all I need to wanna tell you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thanks.
Okay. Al?
Al DeGeeta, I live at 1,000 Blue Jay Street. I'm here to beg you guys to do something about the noise coming from the pit. It... I mean, I'm losing three to four hours a night of sleep. And if that's not enough to say, hey, it's too much. I mean, it is... It's way louder. I mean, they can go down there with their decibel readers all night long. When me and the officers are standing there talking, you can hear the music over us, which a normal conversation, they say, is 60 decibels, but when the officers go down there, they say it's not. Something's wrong. I mean, it is... If you can hear it over our conversation, it is definitely louder than 65 decibels down there. And I don't know where... I mean, like the one officer said, he's taking it from across the street. I mean, I went down there last night, and across the street, it's blaring. If it was by any one of your houses, I guarantee you, the first night it happened, it would have stopped. That's how bad it is. I asked Mike to come up, just so he could get firsthand to hear it. I mean, even last night, they went down and turned it down, and you could still hear that thumping, thumping, thumping. I mean, even in our... It says in here, under the noise ordinance, prohibited noise. It shall be unlawful for any person to create or cause the creation of noise disturbance so as to disturb or disrupt peace and quietude of a person in the town. It doesn't have anything to do with the decibel reader. That right there says, hey, you can't play your music that loud. I mean, to have it out there on the deck blaring, I mean, that's not the intent of that business. That's what... That's not what that business was intended for. I mean, it's... You gotta listen... You almost have to come down and listen to it to understand. If it was by one of your houses, I guarantee you, it would have stopped the first night. There wouldn't have been anything about the decibel reading, 'cause you cannot sleep 'cause of it. I mean, it is bad. I don't know what... I mean, it has to stop. I mean, it's almost two months now. And I mean, if you weren't getting asleep, you'd be upset, too. I'm sorry, but it's horrible.
Thank you, Al. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, hey, Kevin, welcome. Sure.
My name's Kevin Cherry. I live at 514 Parkway Drive, and I own the 1200 South Virginia Trail, known as the Bonzer Shack previously, Mexicali Brews, Blues, a few other things. And Al, I can appreciate what you're saying about noise complaints, 'cause I am one of the people that have caused noise complaints. And it's ironic that you were in front of me on this, because I've been dealing with the town and planning department for two years, trying to get some fruition on something, and have submitted eight site plans, $40,000 in architectural fees, and I'm a little upset about it. The last set we sent in, I sent in through the town attorney, so that they would believe that I'm actually trying to get this thing fixed. The building inspector, Matt Loker, seems to come up, and this is the words from Ben Cahoon, my architect. He said to me, and I asked for his permission to use his name and his statement, that every time he comes up with a reason, a way to fix this, that we had to go over Matt's head and go to the Insurance Commission Board in, I think, Raleigh. We came back, gave it to Mr. Michael to bring in. He came up with another reason. He worked just as hard to keep us from getting to stop what you want. We've already stopped the noise outside. We don't play music after a certain hour. We've done numerous, numerous things trying to help the town out. I've been labeled, in my opinion, as the bad guy, and I'm not real happy about it, because I know my site, the Bonzer Shack, has had not one but two breast cancer awareness events raising over... Excuse me, I've written this down. $16,000. I've had not one but two serving for autism benefits, which we raised, I don't know, somewhere in that same, around 15, 16,000. Stephanie Mott, when she had a brain cancer, she came to us and asked if we would have had a benefit for her. Actually, her friends came to us, and we did it. We raised, I believe, 12,000. When local girl Lindsay Pridgen's brother fell off the golf cart in Ocracoke, and he was in ICU, they weren't sure if he was gonna be alive or not, they needed money as well. They were gonna have it at another site. They... That site canceled. We stepped up and did it in, like, three days, and we raised quite a bit of money. Isabella Rainey, Gordon Rainey's daughter, had a neurological disorder, and no one knew what was going on. He also asked if we could do a benefit, or his friends did. People rarely ask to help themselves out, and we raised quite a bit of money. And then Kell's kid swimming for autism. I'm just trying to point that I'm not the bad guy. I've done a lot of good things for this town. I am passionate about this town. I wanna raise my children in this town. I love this town. And I want to do what you guys want. I want to build a fence and put plants around it. I really, really do. But every time we submit something, we get blocked by the planning department. And you can tell on my face, I'm very, very adamant about this, because I'm losing lots and lots of sleep about it. And it's... I've reached out to the mayor, you've been here since the beginning, and I asked you to watch this, because I was afraid it was gonna devolve into a situation, two years, and it's devolved, and it's not from us. We've drug on a few occasions. I'm not even gonna say we haven't. We have, but each time, I can point to why we did. The reason, right before you said that, I wanna understand, you were thinking about taking a lawsuit against me, was because the building inspector decided that we need to put outdoor bathrooms outside. Okay? This... You all look like this is the first time you've heard of this, and it's like, I know that you guys are not talking, hearing the same thing that we're hearing, so I wanna talk directly to you, so we can fix this problem. I promise you, I'm not the bad guy, I'm the good guy. I wanna do the right thing by this town. I wanna do the right thing by building this fence and building the noise and keeping the people down to a minimum. But I need some help, and the building inspector is standing right in our way. I swear to God. And I'll answer any questions if, Kathy.
You guys have any questions for Kevin?
Not yet.
Yeah. Kevin, we will talk about this in response to public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
And then follow up with you from there?
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you. Okay. Let's see if anyone else has any... Any... Would also like to speak during this public comment time? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak this evening at this public comment time? Okay. Then we will close public comment. We'll move on to response to public comment. First, just in order. Eddie, thank you for coming in and making an update. It's nice to... For you to come back to us before we had to reach back out to you, so thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Al, regarding the noise, and obviously, if you're staying up and it's keeping you up, I understand that if you're losing sleep over it, you're gonna be passionate about it, and it's gonna affect your well-being, so to speak. I have not gone out there to hear it, so I, you know, I'm not... I'm not able to understand from your vantage point what you're hearing. When... When... Do you mind coming back up to the podium for a minute? When are... What are the hours that you're hearing this? And, I mean, is this seven days a week?
Sunday night, from 11 o'clock at night until 3 o'clock in the morning. And it's periodic. I mean, there's... It depends on if he has, like, a big event inside, he doesn't have the DJ outside. But it's mainly the DJ on the outside. I don't know why he has to have a DJ out there on that deck. And, I mean, it's just... It just thumps, 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 all night long, and...
Are you sure it's not the brewing station? Because I live a most walking distance from the pit.
Positive. I get there every time to find out where the noise is coming before a microphone call.
Okay.
The brewing station, I can... The brewing station is actually... They'll play outside, but they don't have... They'll have acousticals outside. Or they'll have, like, at Kevin's, they have bands there, but they're not playing, like, loudly. They're playing nice, calm music. I mean, I've been by his place, and I go to his place. That music would not bother me at all. It's the loud thumping, thumping, thumping of that DJ that's out there on that deck. His music is mellow compared to what is happening up there.
And so you've isolated from what you believe it is, just when it's outside on the deck?
Oh, yeah.
Late night.
It's definitely the outside deck.
And you have called, and it sounds like we have gone out and done and performed decibel readings, and those are not registering to be a violation within our ordinance?
Correct.
So you all can't do anything from that vantage point, because you don't have anything to enforce? Okay. I'm just trying to understand from the scope.
Well, then, if you look under Section D...
I'm not negating what you're describing.
Like I'm saying, I mean, if you look under Section, where it says D, prohibited noise. I mean, that there should tell you right there that, hey, that is... I mean, every officer that's come out there says, man, I don't know how you could... No, I can't. The everyone that's come out there. It's nuts. I mean, it... You'd have to... You'd have to come by and experience it. You know what I mean? I'm in my house, and you can just...
What's your address?
1,000 Blue Jay Street, right behind Kill Devil Custers.
Okay.
And like I say, Sunday's the worst night, 'cause it's Euro night, but during the week, there's times where he'll have a DJ out there, depending on what he has going on.
We will look into this, Al. I mean, I'm not gonna make any promises or anything.
But it's been two months now. You know what I mean? And I guarantee you, like I'm saying, if it was by any one of your houses, it would have stopped the first night, because it's that bad.
You live... Do you live near?
I live walking distance, really. I can check it out next... Next sun... This weekend.
Okay.
I almost went there last night, but I just lost interest. I didn't even think about it.
Okay. That would be great, if you... And I certainly don't... Set my alarm to get up to go out there at 11 o'clock at night. I'm an early riser, not a late-night person, but I wouldn't be opposed to doing that. But, no, if you would definitely check that out, and then I'll try to make a point to check it out, and then, you know, the comment about if it's beside our house or not, I mean, at the end of the day, we can only enforce what we can enforce. But to have an appreciation for what you're describing, I wanna understand it better. So, you know, I appreciate Commissioner Midget that you're gonna check it out, if any of the rest of us can as well. But at the end of the day, we still have... Hold on, Al. Al, we're gonna do the best we can do. That's all I can promise. I'm not...
Did you read the ordinance?
Yeah, we wrote the ordinance. But we have to have...
Well, prohibited noise has a decibel. That's... That refers to the decibel reading, which is the level to which it is prohibited, at which it becomes prohibited, and it hasn't exceeded that. That's the point. Whenever this has happened, and Ben has been asked, officer's gone down there and talked to him and taken a reading, and the reading hasn't exceeded the decibel level, he has lowered the volume as a courtesy. He's not forced to do that by the code, because he's not exceeding. So... But we're gonna look into it further and see... See if there's anything that we're missing here. There are no other complaints. There's like... There's a couple hundred residences within a quarter-mile, you know, radius of there, and there's no other complaints. Okay.
Just for clarification, maybe everyone's awareness, what is the reading? I mean, is it a certain distance away from the source, and then a certain decibel reading?
It's on the property...
Property line.
And Chief for Dana may be able to describe how your officers are doing it when they respond?
One of you guys want to...
Comment? When your officers are responding to a noise complaint call, procedurally, what they're doing?
Will you step up there, Dana? I appreciate it. You and I talked about this earlier.
Well, usually, they'll go to the residents first, where they've got it. But actually, Cahoon says it is from the property line of where it's originating from. And so they'll go up to Al's residence, and then they'll go up to take a reading, and they'll go take a reading of the source, so it is. And then it also goes to where it's occurring in either residential zone or commercial zone, which is higher for commercial zone. Unfortunately, Al lives in a commercial zone, and so does the business. And if it did affect two different zones, residential and commercial, it's the higher of the two readings, which, since it originated in the commercial zone, the commercial zone would be high. It's 65 at night, and I believe it's 75 during the daytime, which I'd had to look at, just to be positive on the daytime, so... But they've gone up there, and they've talked to Al, and they've also gone, as I said before, and talked to him, and they've turned it down most of the time. I think I called back.
And I'm not aware of, but have you all been called on any other complaint that you're aware of?
Not... Not I'm aware of anytime recently. Over the years, you know, different times over the years, there might have been one, you know, or two, but we're talking about over a long period, 10 years period of time. I think the... I think we come up with, if I write it, seven in the past three years?
Yeah, I think I... There's been 32 in the past 12 years.
32 in the past 12, that's correct. And that's all, you know, different locations, correct?
Oh, throughout the town?
Right. Well, no, from about the...
Originating from the pit.
Okay. Okay. Does that answer your question?
That answers. That's perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thanks, Dana.
Okay.
May I say something?
Sure. Do you mind?
Al, you carry a lot of weight from the town, from this and there. And after you guys listen to what happens over the pit and hear the noise, instead of just passing the law or trying to find a new way to prove the law, go to Ben and say, Ben, you're gonna screw it up for yourself. This is my opinion, of course. Is that you're gonna screw yourself up if you keep on doing what you're doing. You're upsetting Al, he's gonna get a whole bunch of people that are gonna be on his side, and then it's gonna be a big match against you, against them. But if you go over there to him in a small town like this and say, Ben, you're really screwing it up, bud, you need to fix this thing before we have to legislate it, I think... You think that would work now? You think that might help? I mean, the way the mayor...
I think they've gone to him. I've gone to him. I've gone to him, and it's just...
Huge difference, though. I mean, there is. These guys carry a lot of weight that you and I don't care.
But he does, too, 'cause he's on the planning department, so he does... He gets a little bit...
That doesn't have any...
Yeah, it doesn't. Okay. Okay. Thanks, Kevin. Okay. Moving on to what Kevin brought up. Who can give us an update? Meredith, can you give us... Do you have it prepared to give us where things currently stand with that site plan?
I was not in the last meeting with Ben Cahoon and the building inspector. I can... I can give you a little brief history for the board members that don't know, and tell you where we stand. And a lot of the two years was, we were working on zoning amendments to make it so that the outdoor area could be there with less burden on the businesses that have outdoor areas, you know, not requiring parking and changing some of our regulations, and that took some time. And then we went back and changed them again to make it even a little bit less restrictive on those businesses for the outdoor areas, because this board agreed that we want the outdoor areas, that that was a goal, that they thought they were good for the community, thought it brought about the community together when you see events like he has outside and all the people there. It's very good for our town. Since then, the site plan was approved, and they've been working with the building inspector, and the architect had to submit some paperwork called an Appendix B to give occupancy loads of the outdoor area and the indoor area, and the facilities that were in those two, you know, what facilities you need for the occupancy of the site as a whole. And it's my understanding, there's some difference of opinion about whether restrooms are necessary for the occupancy of the outdoor area. And Ben's talked to the Department of Insurance, and I know that Matt's also spoken with the Department of Insurance, and that's why they had a meeting that I was not in, but I'd be happy to get the details of that meeting and update the Board via email, if that would be satisfying.
Okay. And was this fairly recent, that meeting?
Two weeks.
Two weeks ago?
Yeah, two weeks ago.
About two weeks ago. But it has been... Matt has been very, very getting in our way on this whole thing. He really has. It's been horrible. And, again, we're... Architect fees are running through the roof on this whole thing. It's ridiculous. And it started as the planters, and I said I would remove them two years ago, but then it turned out it wasn't planters, it was the noise complaints that were the deal. So they were trying to get me to curb tables beside my side yard by using the planters. That's how it started. And then they changed my offenses from being planters to being, what is it, Ben Cahoon said? They decided, the town decided that the outdoor activities, like music games, et cetera, were not permitted uses. That changed. They've always been permitted uses. The brew station's been that way. When it was a Krabby Shack, it was that way. Chili peppers, that way. Hortichords, that there and thing. And you know, you've sent somebody out to look at those, so I'm not kidding about that. But it's been a big and swift for me. Every time we submit something, there's been something else. We submit something else, oh, it's something else. And I was using Ben Cahoon, because he was easy to deal with, the town liked to deal with him. And you saw it from the first day. I went in there saying, we wanna fix this thing. We wanna work. But it has been an uphill, I feel like Sissy, that's pushing up the hill, the rock, and it rolls right back down. And it explains my space on page.
So, we've exchanged some emails and we've had some conversations. Are, are the planters still an issue? Cause I mean, I know we've talked and my personal opinions of...
Matt Locur is the issue? He has a personal thing against me. I personally believe that he has an issue against me. I don't know what it's for and I really can't even guess, but I do believe that there's an issue out there that he would stand my way no matter what. I asked Ben if he thinks that, that he submits another one that will go through, well, three times ago, he said, "Oh yeah, this will go through." After we went through and went to the North Carolina Insurance Board, he said, "Well, Matt won't ever like to stand on because these guys will, will do exactly what they say." As soon as we did exactly what they say and we dealt with it, Matt came out and got something else to try to block this. It has been an uphill battle, guys, I swear to you on this.
On the, on the late...
From Meredith, the, the planner, or the, I mean, from a...
To back up, the planters were, I mean, there was, there was several things that were built at the, I believe is when it was Mexicali Brews, before it was Bombard Shack. There were several things that were built out there that, that they didn't have permits for and it changed the use of the area. The area was the septic tank and drainage field. And as things evolved, it changed to outdoor area for people to wait for their table and then there was music and then there was cornhole and then there was benches and then there was planters and then there was tables. So, it, it evolved into something that it was never approved for and that's what we talked to Kevin about, about getting that straight. We've also talked to all the other restaurants that he's mentioned today about the same thing, that they also are working towards getting their outdoor space right.
And when this, just for a little bit of history, when this first started two years ago, we didn't have an ordinance in the town that allowed this type of use. So, that's, at the same time, we were trying to enact some ordinances to, to facilitate this.
Right.
Because we do see it as an asset. We want Kevin to be able to do the types of things that he's doing out there.
For him to be able to do that under the old ordinance, he would've had to park the entire outdoor area at one to two hundred for a restaurant, I mean, one to one hundred for a restaurant. We changed the ordinances so that now the outdoor areas require no parking.
Right.
No additional parking. So, a lot of, a lot of things changed in the ordinance and worked with Kevin and his, and his architect to make, really make the ordinance not only work for him, but work for what the goal of the board of commissioners was to actually promote outdoor areas because, you know, the board really thought that that was a good thing to have and there's no doubt that it is.
So, why would someone want to get cited? Why would someone want to get cited?
It's just in general, when, it's complaint driven. So, what started with those host circumstances were complaints and, and you've made dramatic strides to elim, I mean, to eliminate those and to my knowledge, you haven't had any this whole, this whole season, I'm not aware of any. So, if they have, they haven't surfaced.
I understand.
Yeah, so anyway, so I mean, I know you're sincere about wanting to do the right thing. I know that. As far as, you know, the impediments in the way to getting there, we need to get the report. We need to see what the outcome is, share it so, so we can be more in the loop about where things stand currently and what's standing in your way. But, you know, from where we were two years ago to where we are now, it's a dramatic improvement. The final thing is getting it compliant with Ben and, and so that's where I just need to figure out where it is and no one's prepared to answer that tonight. Cause we don't have the information.
When you came by the restaurant one morning, when Ben and I were there, and that was almost a year ago, more than a year ago, and you said, "Yeah, the planning department feels like they're really, really close, we don't understand why he stops." It's like, we stopped because we're not really, really close. Where a year later, we're still not really, really close. Every time we get close, somebody moves the goal line.
Yeah, and from, from, the only thing that, cause I followed a little bit, but not in, in great detail Kevin, the only thing that, that I can speak to tonight is, I did think we were really, really close and then it was my understanding, then there was a delay, got in the middle of the season and then there was a change that was initiated with a change to the site plan that came in in December or January or don't, I'm totally trying to go by memory and, and, you know. So, then it became, the rules did change, not the rules, but then the application of those, because then the site plan was changed once again. So, not that you started all over, but then the evaluation of that site plan based on the ordinance had to be conducted again. So, I current, I truly don't know where things stand, but I know Meredith will get us the answers that we need based on tonight and then that can be looked at as, you know, where is it now? What is, what, what is Matt reporting versus what Ben has found out and where, and, you know, where's the gap there? Or where's the communication issue? What's the problem? Let's get to, drill down the problem so we can get this right. Cause I truly believe at the end of the day, we all want the same thing. It's just, how do we get there?
You and I do, for sure.
So...
Probably the planning department has the same interest that you and I have.
I surely think they do. I think they do. We just have to, we've gotta get there, so. Okay, all right. Does anyone else have anything to, or any other questions, Travis, did you?
No, I mean, I, I'm certainly one that wants to, to see this get resolved, not only for Kevin's sake, but I personally like to go there, so.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm definitely interested in seeing what the report comes back with and then if there's things that we can help with, then I certainly wanna try to facilitate that.
I don't think the planning board is purposely standing in anybody's way and has anything against anybody. I think they're trying to do their job the best they can and follow the rules and I don't think anybody in particular in the planning department is, is, should be singled out for doing what they're, what they feel that their job is. And, and I know, I've known Matt for twelve or thirteen years in the position that he's in and there's been, I don't know, dozens and dozens of people that feel the same way you do because perhaps they didn't get what they want the first time or they had some issues along the way. And he's trying to do what he's supposed to do as best that he can and it's not that he's out to get you, I can guarantee you that. I, I promise you, he's not out to get anybody. He's trying the best that he can to follow the rules and to follow the changes in the site plans and changes in the code and to try to get it all together and he wants to help you and we wanna help you. I know for myself and for the mayor and for Brandy, before we even took office, we said one of the things we wanted to do was to be able to have people do what you'd like to do and what the brew station does and what Ben does or whoever is have some entertainment so that people, cause that's what we want. And we're gonna try our best from this point on to see that you can get what you need to get straightened out and to have your business running the way you'd like it to run. I can, I can promise you that, but I, nobody's out to get you, I can, I can assure you. I, just take my word for it.
Respectfully, just for...
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Any other? Okay. All right. Let's move on to introductions and presentations on our agenda. We have two presentations this evening. First, I'd like to introduce Karen Worletner with Outer Banks Runcation and her presentation on the July fourth events.
And I'm actually gonna make a quick up on here so you can have this advanced. This is the medal from this past July fourth race, it's the third, and it's presenting this to the town.
Thank you.
With the Freedom of Fire Cracker. Let you share that and pass it around. I have a very simple, simple message tonight, it's a thank you to the town of Kildalil Hills for hosting for three years now, the Freedom and Firecracker 5K, the Old Glory Mile and the Little Sparkler Stroll on July fourth. The town is excellent to work with for us runners and I say that of many hats, past president of the Running Club, our membership event is held here in, in January, the Frostbite. A lot of runs happen past this town, as Dana tells me, there's a marathon every month. And for those of us who run and train, a special shout out to all the residents on Bay Drive, Swan, Baum, Airport, cause we're all running your streets and they're, they're very patient and very cooperative to, to go out over and give us a little room. So, thank you to Kildalil Hills. This is a great venue for the July four race. We start here, right out here at the town. The first thing they pass under the arch is the War Memorial. It's also the first thing they come back to off the course. And we're running on Veterans Drive on July fourth. So, it wasn't, you know, anything odd that we picked the town of Kildalil Hills to have this race on this day. It was for those ideal occasions and we have that view of the monument. So, for the July four, for our visitors who are here, it is a tremendous event. The issue, we had hoped that was gonna be a combo event as fireworks were returning to the county of Kildalil Hills, five K in the morning, fireworks in the evening and, you know, an opportunity knocks, blow it out of the water with a hurricane. Thanks to Arthur, there was some readjustment. Last year, Mayor Davies was able to join us for the, for the event and, and it's really surprising, you know, we all know each other, we're local, we, Sheila, how are you? Dana. But when the visitors are here and you've got the mayor out there and not only is she welcoming you, she's on the course with you and walking you back and forth, it's a really big deal to our visitors. It makes a big statement for a big race with that hometown feel. So, this year, it was a little adjustment. Our first year, we had three hundred and thirty people, we thought was great. Last year, we had five hundred and fifty-three. This year, we were on course to hit that with four hundred and forty pre-registered Wednesday night. And Wednesday night, we made the call, looking at reports from the National Hurricane Center, NOAA. We did not use information from the Weather Channel. The call was made to move it from Friday morning at seven AM to six thirty PM. And packet pickup, obviously, we know a lot of visitors left, they picked up their packets, didn't know what was happening, affected walk-ups, but by Friday afternoon, when it was sunny and a little warm, we had forty people walk up and pay it on the spot, we ended it with two seventy-eight. So, I think post hurricane, that's not bad. We were very happy about that and they were very happy to get it under. So, our thank you to the town. Next year, we're about to present you the fourth year's medal, maybe two, because we're, we're asking for permission for two events next year. The four falls on, on Saturday. And so, we're gonna, we're asking for Freedom on Friday, the third, and Firecracker on Monday, the sixth. So, we look forward to seeing you next year, invite you out to join us, welcome the guests, start the race. And it's a great event and we wanna thank the town. And specifically this year, with the hectic events of Arthur, Lieutenant Holland of the Kildalil Hills Police Department was my liaison and he and I text, emails, phones throughout that storm and he was absolutely great. The traffic officer stopped by to make sure he had everything in order before the event to ensure public safety. So, thank you to our police department and to the town and we look forward to seeing you next year.
Thank you Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Karen, just a couple of things, I appreciate you coming to, to thank us, but kind of in reverse, I wish to thank you and Runcation, you guys are always so well organized and it makes all the difference in the world when we're the, the host site or the venue when you're working with people like yourself and your organization. I had the pleasure to work, gosh, back at the YMCA, I know that's the next presentation, but years ago, Karen and I worked together and you're not gonna find a more organized, down, you know, detail-driven person than Karen. And so, that's in anything that you do and that's followed with when you put on these races and I know it helps our law enforcement be able to do their job the way they need to do it when they're working with someone that's, is organized. So, thank you for what you do, so, appreciate it. Okay, well, we have the next presentation, it's the Outer Banks YMCA and we have the chairman, BJ McAvoy of the Board of Directors with us and we have Katie Burgess, the Executive Director, so welcome you two.
Thank you, thank you, thank you mayor, thank you board commissioners, town officials. I'm BJ McAvoy, I'm the chairman of the board of the YMCA and the Outer Banks and on behalf of the Outer Banks YMCA, all of its members, its board as well, want to extend a thank you to this town and its officials for the continued support of our YMCA and we are forever thankful for that support. Katie Burgess are great directors here to give a presentation about how some of that support has been used in benefiting our members at the YMCA and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Good afternoon and thank you again for having us tonight. This is probably one of my favorite presentations to give, I've been doing this for four years now, I'm happy to say. And it's basically because I get to say thank you so many times for the absolutely wonderful things that we are able to do with the partnership of, with the town of Kildalil Hills. I have a few slides and a little video to show you, but I'll go through them quick. It's just really exciting, all the things that are going on at the Y. Just to remind you, our mission is to put Judeo Christian principles into practice through programs that build healthy spirit, mind and body for all. I think I say it every year, so I'm sorry, but the last two words are so important of our mission, it's for all. We do not discriminate based on age, race, gender, ethnicity or financial need. And that's very important because many in our community would not be able to afford to go to just any other gym, but because of the YMCA, we're able to provide financial assistance and serve so many more in our community. We'll get to the numbers in just a minute. First, I wanna show you a few pictures. This one was just from two weeks ago. We are providing safe and fun environment for over a hundred kids every week through our summer day camp program. Yes, a hundred kids in our building every week. It's fun. Lots going on, we try to keep them busy, try to keep them outside as much as we can. I've had so many parents stop me at the end of the day and say, "Camp is so amazing, thank you so much for the opportunity to, to have our children here." They pass out by seven PM every night, we love it. So, we keep them busy, keep them going. We have so many activities going on. If you haven't been to the YMCA, I encourage you to come, take a tour, we'll show you around, introduce you to some people. We have so many different activities, these are just a few of the programs that we have going on. We have several open houses, which is the corner to the left picture in the upper left-hand corner. Camp Fins is the picture of the pool with about fifteen kids in Camp Fins last week. And then we also have fishing camps. We're not just a swimming gym. I think a lot of people think of the YMCA as just a gym or just a place to go work out. We're a place where you have fun experiences, things that you remember for a lifetime. This is a after-school program with the town of Nag's Head that we actually have, where the kids walk over and have swim lessons after school. We're looking to continue expanding that into the other schools as well. We serve all populations, as I said before. This is a new program this year that we were able to subsidize. It's called Zumba with Friends and we have an average of fifteen to thirty special needs participants come and we do Zumba. It's a little modified, as you can see, some are severe and profound and some are high-functioning, but we have about as many volunteers as we have participants dancing with them and it's, it's an amazing hour to watch and participate. Of course, we have sports. We had just over two hundred kids in youth sports last year and we have started some new adult programs and this year had over eighty people participate in adult programs. So, we have opportunities for all ages. You can see the picture of the pool, that's actually Aqua Zumba class. The upper left-hand corner picture is a chair class for our active older adults and then we had kids yoga during the season. Family opportunities is very important, we have Zumba Tomic and Zumba for Kids, we have opportunities for families to come together like dive-in movies and cookies with Santa. Oops, went one too far, there we go. And we're always trying to be involved in the community. You'll see us at the St. Patrick's Day Parade, you'll see us at luncheons at the Baum Center, we, we try to go everywhere. There we go. I'd like to show a quick video, it's about two minutes long, but it is of one of our members and expressing his thanks.
My name is Christopher Howard and I've been a member of the Y for almost four years. When I first enrolled to get a membership here, the staff here told me about the open doors policy to help me figure out a way to afford it, because when they first told me the pricing was a little scary for me, being a single parent and really kind of seasonally employed. I work on charter boats as a living here, so my day starts at four o'clock in the morning and I don't get home till sometimes six or seven o'clock at night. Being gone that long and that far away from land, having a place for Karen to be that is safe and fun is a real good peace of mind. After doing swim lessons and exercising, yeah, the Y also offers a great summer camp program and my son was enrolled in that and with the open doors policy, I was able to afford having him here for the summer, which has been a really big help to me. They had a lot of young counselors here that were really, really good with kids and all the activities of swimming and skateboarding and basketball, racquetball, and then they took field trips to the beach, they kept the kids really entertained and happy and the kids were able to make new friends as well as see their old ones and grow, learning how to get along with other kids socially. Without the YMCA, Karen would get stuck at somebody's house, a neighbor, you know, I've got friends whose parents still live here on the beach and he would get stuck with them at their house for the day where, you know, he might get outside for an hour if he's lucky, but most of the time he'd be stuck in front of a television or something. The Outer Banks YMCA has given me lots of opportunities to create a bond with my son as well as have a safe place for him to be while I'm on a boat all day. Ready? One, two, three. We love the YMCA.
So, that's just one of the many, many stories that we hear every day about their people's experiences at the Y. Just to break it down by the numbers, I hope that you'll notice, everything has grown since last year. We are at just over nineteen hundred member households, that's over forty-eight hundred members. And last year, we served over twenty-one thousand people in our community through programs and membership. To come to the YMCA, you don't even have to be a member to participate in our programs. So, some people come without memberships. We had over two hundred and five thousand family center visits annually, that's just our local population. That's just our local population. That does not include the tourists. And 35, almost 35, 34% of our members and program participants were awarded over $395,000 in financial assistance last year. That number has grown $35,000 from the previous year, which was over $25,000 from the year before. So, as you can tell, our community has a growing need and we are definitely trying to serve that. To break it down a little bit more for the town of KDH, we have 877 households, which is about 2,400 members, a little over, that are Kildova Hills residents. 378 Kildova Hills households receive financial assistance, which is over 906 people. That's 216 families and 162 individuals. And then in our summer camp, over 60 of the kids are from Kildova Hills. We provided over $35,000 in financial assistance last year and this year, it looks like that number is even going to exceed $35,000, just for summer camp. We have an amazing opportunity to impact our community through programs, through our membership and with the partnership from the town of Kildova Hills, we're able to help young people achieve their potential, empower people of all ages to be healthier and strengthen our community. Very quickly, you heard Chris from the video mention the open doors program. That is our assistance program so that no one will ever have to be turned away for their inability to pay at the Y. And that is what your partnership helps with. It's vital that we continue to have that support so that we can help more and more people. And every penny that's raised stays here in the Outer Banks. That's very important as well. These are just a few statistics of what your dollars can go towards. $100 can help an individual attend Financial Peace University, which is a budgeting course. $35 provides eight weeks of Y sports and so forth. Now, when you think of the Y, don't just think of a gym. Think of all these pictures that you've seen, think of the stories that you've heard and know that we're so much more than a gym. We're a cause, we're part of the community and we work to strengthen our community and the people who live here. And thank you so much to the town of Kildova Hills for continuing to help us do that. That's our camp kids saying thank you on the pool deck. And just a few more pictures. So, thank you again for your support.
Thank you Katie.
Thanks.
Any questions or comments, Katie or BJ?
No. Thank you.
Thank you guys for the work that you do. Great, great video, great pictures. It's nice to, if you don't go in there to see it, I know my kids love going to the Y. They love the outer pool, that's for sure. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on then on the agenda, excuse me, under New Business. Item number one is the Resolution of Consent to Assignment and Change of Control of Charter Communications, Inc. to Comcast Corporation. And Debbie, may I call on you to...
Sure, ma'am. The Board actually received this information back in June. It was quite lengthy and wanted to give you an opportunity to review it. As the Mayor stated, this is a consent to assign and change the control of Charter to Comcast. Once the transfer is completed, Comcast will continue the franchise pursuant to the existing franchise agreement, which is due for renegotiation in 2016, but at that time, the renegotiations will be done through the North Carolina Secretary of State's office as opposed to each individual municipality negotiating the franchise. The section of the code outlines the condition for sales or transfers and as the grantor, the town is bound to act on the grantee's request of transfers. And certainly, the town attorney can speak to any of the legalities that the Board may have. But at this time, we would recommend, at the conclusion of your discussion, a motion to approve the resolution and of the consent to assign and change of control of Charter Communication, Inc. to Comcast Corporation.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Are they asking us or telling us?
They're asking us to adopt the resolution.
Does this change anything with services or anything else? It's just your bill's going to come from Comcast instead of Charter?
Correct. Now, they may do, you know, there may be some changes, but there's not anything that's been outlined.
Wasn't there a citizen that had a problem recently with Charter?
They did, yes, or he didn't. The one, the one that I think you're referring to, the one that came and spoke, he wasn't happy with the boxes and how that had been changed. And I think you'll find a lot of people that didn't like that change.
Yeah, because it's my understanding that each of the new flat panel televisions have HD tuners in them and they are capable of receiving HD channels. However, Charter is now requiring every person that wants cable to have this box, which they charge a monthly rate for. So, I don't really think that's nice or appropriate, but...
Right, and with this, you know, we don't have any, you probably know, any say in that. Even the citizen that was coming here that one night to complain, I think he knew that we didn't have any control over that, but I think he just wanted to be heard and voices concerns. There's a lot of people, even some in my household, that share that sentiment. But I think what we're doing tonight is just basically, you know, when you asked your first question, yes, we're being asked to do this, but they're making a name change, you know, or they're making an assignment change within their corporation to Comcast. So, that's really what we're doing is almost a formality of accepting the resolution with that assignment, but it doesn't give us any ability to change anything of what they're doing or really to have any say-so in what they're doing. And apparently, moving forward, we get municipalities in general are going to have less of an opportunity to have a say-so, but that's across the board. We just happen, this is who's in our area, but it's going to be that way, you know, in the Raleigh area with whoever services them. It's going to be put in the North Carolina Secretary of, is it the Secretary of State? The Secretary...
Secretary of State's Office.
Right, that's going to ultimately be negotiating and making those decisions and having input. Certainly, we can provide input there, but not directly in part of the negotiation. So, really, tonight is more of just a name-changing.
So, if we don't pass this, what happens?
I'll turn to our attorney on that one. I don't know.
That's a good question. They asked the same thing in Kitty Hawk and don't know what happens. Your franchise ordinance requires you to do this unless you make findings that determine that Comcast is not qualified and Comcast, of course, gave you a lot of information of what they sent you. I went to Comcast's website and looked at all the information they had on there and I would say that you would have a hard time finding that they are not qualified to operate a charter operation like we have for the Cablevision and Internet service, telephone service we have here. They may well be the largest in the United States at this point in time.
So, maybe it'll be better. We never know.
And it says, "You shall not unreasonably withhold your consent."
Right. So, I guess if we did unreasonably withhold our consent, they potentially could come back to us with, they could threaten legal action, is that correct?
Well, they could. I don't know that...
I mean, I don't think we're trying to go in that direction, but to answer your question, I mean, I guess ultimately, that's what could happen.
Say, "Well, we don't really need it."
Right.
Any other questions, comments, discussion?
Not for me.
Okay, not a motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Resolution of Consent to Assign and Change of Control of Charter Communications Incorporated to Comcast Corporation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other comments? Oh, those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is item number three, which is, because we removed two.
Right.
So, it's really the second item that we're taking under New Business, but if you're following the agenda. This is Request for Guidance on Potential Sidewalks and Multi-Use Path Improvements. And Meredith, may I call on you for that?
Yes, ma'am. At the last meeting, the Board asked for some options regarding the continuation of the sidewalk improvements, both on 158 and on Bay Drive. Staff's come up with several options. They're broken into two different categories. One is for funding and that's probably the one we need to focus on a little bit more. The Board put $100,000 into a capital reserve fund this year. Grant funding for the 2014-15 fiscal year that we're in right now is not available. However, we need to apply for grant funding for the 15-16 fiscal year in August. So, we've got to make two decisions about the years. One is, does the Board want to continue the sidewalk improvements this year with no grant funding with the money that was put into the capital reserve fund? Assuming that you do, do you want to make application for a project for the 2015-16 year and have the match, that would be a 50-50 matching fund? So, you kind of have to make a little bit of a commitment to put money in that capital reserve fund again if you use the money. And finally, what area do you want to work in? Do you want to stay on 158? Do you want to move back to Bay Drive? The Town Manager's Memo outlines a recommendation to...
Well, maybe I shouldn't make the assumption that if you want to continue in 14-15, I'll let y'all decide that first and we'll go into what we want to do. Okay, yeah, pause for one second. So, basically, because of the timeline with the tourism, the way the tourism funding works, the tourism board funding, the application that's due next month in August is for the next fiscal year. So, you always have to be planning way far in advance, but it's based on, if you're going with that, the application being the 50-50 match, it's based on, that would be for the 15-16 fiscal year, but it's also based on our funds that we would make available in the 15-16 year. So, we've made funds available for the 14-15 year and the budget we just adopted, we allocated $100,000. If we want to give staff direction to move forward with a matching grant, place application and for a matching grant with the tourism board, we're also need to be, to stand behind that, to say we're going to put the $100,000 in the 15-16 budget. So, there would be the matching funds or a smaller amount. You could say 50,000, whatever. We just did 100,000 this year. But if we said, if we kept in tune and think we're going to do the same thing in the next year, then you potentially, that year for 15-16 would have $200,000 to spend. But we also need to, so you need to agree, we need to agree on what direction to give financially, but then because Meredith needs to write in the grant what we're going to do with that, we also need to give direction on what part of our sidewalk that's going to be used to enhance. So, we, but then we've got that part of it, but then we also have to say, are we going to spend, another option is, are we going to spend the 100,000 this year that we've allocated or do you not want to spend that this year? We put that towards the project for the matching funds and then you could potentially be applying for 200,000 if you put another, if we put another 100,000 in, or you just leave it at that 100. Are y'all following all the different options we have? Okay. So, probably to start from the simplest decision-making point is, do we want to see any physical improvements to sidewalks this coming whole fiscal year between now and next, June 30th? That would probably be the simplest place to start.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this something we should wait for Brandy to be here as well, or...
Unfortunately, we don't have time for her to come back to that. However, I do know through emails that she and I have exchanged, she supports moving forward sidewalks now and in the future.
Okay.
So, I think she would be supportive of us putting, laying more sidewalks in calendar year or fiscal year 14-15, so the immediate, and then also continuing to put aside money to do a matching grant for the next fiscal year.
Well, I like that idea and I didn't realize that it was, I knew we had to be done by the end of August, but I didn't realize that was for the following year, so...
Yeah, it's way far out, yeah.
But it fits in with what I was thinking was if we budgeted 100, if we do options one and two, which I really like, we're at 67.
Right.
My question then was, does the 33 remaining roll into potentially the money that we'd allocate for next year?
Yes, it stays in that reserve fund.
Okay.
With the interest staying with it.
Right, so then we could apply for one of the larger projects.
We could, if we were making a commitment now to continue to fund that 100,000 next year, then you actually have the 133,000 that you would, if I did the math correctly, potentially match. I mean, there's no guarantee, but you could ask for more. Right, is there a cap?
Well, what, no, well, there may be a cap for the tourism board, but they don't have it written in their bylaws. They have unwritten caps occasionally, but what staff would be asking for and what the page two of the Town Manager's Memo and him is to go ahead and make a decision on the project for the 15-16 year and knowing that whatever the difference is, let's say that $67,000 is option one and two and that's what the Board chooses to do right now, this fall and this winter, they're going to do options one and two, which I'll show the audience in just a second. There'll be $34,000 left. You'll have to tentatively agree that whatever the budget estimate for three and four, when the town engineer really gets into it, when that final number comes out, that you'll meet in addition to the 34, whatever that difference is. Now, if you want to put 100,000 and there may be some leftover again for 16-17, then we'd be talking about that again in July of next year for the next grant cycle.
Right, but since we don't know at this point, we're going to know that information, you will know that prior to putting the grant together with it, because are you, you're going to get the information from Pete, from Pete on what that anticipated three and four is going to cost?
Well, we would recommend you choose three or four because both of them are in the $200,000 range. You'd have 34,000 potentially left, but you never know when you get into it, you might end up having 10,000 potentially left. But if we, we made the recommendation of three or four based on an assumption that the Board would fund the capital reserve fund again, hopefully at the level that they funded it this year, unless we get different guidance this evening. So, the two projects that we've recommended, one or the other, are both in the $200,000 range.
Right, okay.
And one and two are under the $100,000 range so that they could be accomplished in this fiscal year if the Board chose to move forward without funding, without a grant funding.
Right. So, if I may, the action that we would ask from you this evening would be, if you'll look on the second page of the memo, would be to authorize us to proceed with combining items, our options one and two, into a single project and have that engineering completed and take that to bid and then authorize the staff to make the grant application through the tourism board for either three or four. So, we would need for you to tell us which of those you would prefer, item three or item four. And then Meredith would get with the engineer to get those plans drawn up and so forth that would go with her grant package. And then we would have that information once we've gotten the yes or no from the Visitors' Bureau. And then as we discussed just briefly at the last meeting, then we would recommend this be sent for the future to the Street Improvement and Special Projects Committee because as Meredith stated, you also have Bay Drive. As we've talked about, we have some of our larger streets that we're wanting to do sidewalks in the future. So, it's sort of getting into like the, like our street improvements where there's some recommendations from the committee, the chairman, that Mayor Proton Hogan chairs. So, that would be the action that we would ask for you this evening.
Do we have, I know one of the projects that had been mentioned before and I know Skip had mentioned it as well, is the sidewalk section between Collington Road and in front of the Wright Brothers Memorial. Do we have an estimate on what that one would be?
The Collington Road to Wright Brothers Memorial, it's not on this list.
Okay. That's going to be a big number, right?
It's a big, big...
I was just going to use it for perspective, but...
The drainage system there is difficult.
Okay. Is that anything that either the Park Service or the DOT would help us with, since it's on federal?
The Park Service, it's not their property. It's DOT.
With our right of way.
And DOT does have grant funding, but they're all currently suspended due to budgetary constraints. So, I think that if that ever is freed up, that we would be obviously applying for those funds also, but at this point in time, from the research that I've done in the past But at this point in time, from the research that I've done the past couple of weeks, the only funding we really have available to us right now is 50/50 grant funding from the Everett Exeter Board.
Meredith, with your experience applying to the tourism board on multiple occasions, do you think there's any reason they would favor three over four for any reason, or four over three? I mean, anything, any reason you can think of why you, they may like one option better than another?
Not really, except for that it looks like four might complete, I think both of them end up completing a huge section of, of path, like it connects, it makes a, a final connection between one end of town and the other end of town. So both of them, I think, have equal weight.
I, I was asking that question for anyone who's wondering why in the world would she ask that question, was thinking, you know, they do, they both connect our corridor, which is ultimately what we're striving for, but you know, if, if one really does promote in any way more tourism or tourist use, but I don't know that, I mean, it really is just continuing that section, so on one side of town or the other. Because you've got the Dare Center is one option of getting tourists tour, but you know, at the south end, you've got the Eighth Street and Gutter, yeah, so. Okay. Well, so as far as direction tonight, do you all want to see, is there consensus to move forward with one and two funding, or not funding, we've already funded it, but going ahead and doing projects one and two this fiscal year?
I would like to see that, yeah.
Would you like to see that, Mike?
Yeah, I just want to make one point. Anything that we do with this kind of timing, we're not going to get grant money for it.
Correct. So one and two is coming out of what we have already budgeted?
So in order to get grant money, if we spend in this manner, if we continue to do that, we're not going to get grant money. If we spend on a short term.
No, because we're applying now for the following year.
Well, I'm just saying, if we, if we don't do anything right now, then when we, then we can apply for a grant for this and next year have double that money, is my point. I don't know if you follow me.
Yeah, I do, but.
It's, it's, it's a matter of, to me, it's a matter of waiting a year, I guess, and then having twice the amount of money as opposed to doing it now and not having any grant money. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. That's, that's like, that's like what, what's just been done.
Right.
Right.
We could have waited on that. And actually, last year you guys did ask us. They asked last year for, you know, and we weren't ready because we didn't have a plan. And then midway through the year, because the work the street improvement committee did and enough citizen request, we made a decision just to, to fund it. And that's how we got the sidewalks out there right now. We missed the opportunity last year to apply, but yet we still ended up moving forward. So it's kind of, we're back in this situation. We don't want to miss another opportunity, so we definitely have to give direction so we can make that grant application. And there are no guarantees. I mean, you know, hopefully they would fund it, but.
You know, you've noticed that the numbers are quite a bit larger for not nearly as much millennial feet as you did this past year. And I just want to remind the board that that's because we did the easy stuff. We did everything that was easy and we got a really good return on it. And now it's time for the hard stuff and Tony and whenever you're going, you know, two might cost a little bit more than $35,000 once we get into it, but I think it's still within the range of what the board budgeted for this, this, in the capital reserve fund, not necessarily for this year, but the 100,000 that was, but we'll know more when Pete gets it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem with spending the money on one and two right now because it's relatively not a lot of money. It's a lot of money, but it's relatively not a lot compared to Bay Drive and all the rest of it. We could get an immediate result then, but in the future, we want to make sure that we are prepared and we have our, we know what we want to do so we can get grants from here on out instead of spending in this manner, right?
Right.
And we can do that as long as we're also making a commitment to put the matching funds in there. So that's the other thing, like, you know, we're, we're giving direction, if that's what the decision we make, we're giving direction to apply, but we're also going ahead and almost, and not almost, we're committing to fund our capital account again next year. So when we're sitting down, one thing that can't happen is we can't tell, we can't put in an application and then we sit down in our next year's budget workshop and pull that 100,000 back out. I mean, well, you could, but then you'd be giving your grant back. So that, that's the only thing is, is the type of commitment we're making.
Yeah.
Right.
Because we're not spending any money, yeah.
Does the work that was done, that was just completed, and then if we did these two product, projects, does that help us with a grant application to show that we're doing some projects?
Yes, I think the grant application will be looked upon favorably because the work that you've done to, to get there. And, and just in addition, I'll also throw the Bay Drive plug in, you know, you're three fifths done with Bay Drive.
Right.
So your grant applications for that are also be, that'll be noted that we're, we've completed three phases of a five-phase project and, you know, that does help when you're competing for funding.
It shows in your initiative that you're, you're sincere about doing these things,
So Debbie, the, do you need motions or do you need consensus?
Motions, please.
Motions, okay. Is the board prepared to make a motion to direct staff to do projects one and two in fiscal year 2014, 2015 with the funds that we've already established in the capital improvement sidewalk line item?
Yeah, so I think we have consensus on that, but do we have for the grant, where to go?
Well, I was going to do two separate motions, if that's okay. So I can put that first one out as a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so I've moved, that that's what we'll do, is there?
I'll second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion on just that, that part? Okay, all in favor, please sign off saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now what we want to do, providing direction, we'll need a motion to, to direct staff on how to proceed with the tourism grant. And in that, we want to specify what section and to what amount.
Do we have, I mean, just driving past, I mean, seeing the number of, of folks that are at Putt Putt and between Dare Center in that area, I mean, there's, that's a fairly high-traffic area. On the other option, four, do we know, I mean, because there's sidewalks on the opposite side of 158, do we know if one of these two options was, would have higher traffic?
Pedestrian traffic studies haven't been done on these specific areas, so I wouldn't be able to answer that with any, it would be an eyeball.
So option four is on the ocean side? On the, yeah.
East side. Meredith, can you show option three again, please?
Option three is basically in front of the fire department and the Dare Center. Option two, you just approved to be done this year. So that would make that connection between blows all the way through to connect all the way to the north end of town if you did option three. So you'd be going from landing all the way to the north end of town if you chose option three. That would be, option three would complete that section of the sidewalk.
Is there anything that we need to pay attention to with doing a sidewalk in front of the fire station? I mean, I would assume there's some safety issues.
I mean, as far as public safety?
Public safety and then I'm just, I'm thinking about costs is.
Probably some extra traffic signal would have to be put in place, I would think partly additional lighting on that sidewalk to stop the pedestrian traffic if you had a call similar to what you dropped the highway, or some.
The town engineer would, would design it to meet all the safety standards required, but.
I'm just thinking, if there's cost increases.
And the ASHTO standard for sidewalks.
I don't think. I'm not questioning that. I'm just thinking in my head, is, is the number potentially going to go higher with this option based on, you know, anything there, but?
It's, it's pretty, I think, as Meredith stated earlier, it's, it's pretty much what you're going to see with what's left is, is issues. Drainage, drainage problems, as, as Tony was saying, things that are under, underneath all the different lines.
We found lots of surprises on this track, but nobody had a clue what's there.
So it's going to, it's going to, the costs are going to be high, much higher than what we saw for.
Yeah, I saw a few sprinkler heads going off in different directions and things and we're driving by, so I think that's all been resolved now.
And Meredith, do you mind going back to four one more time, please?
Oh, sorry, wrong direction.
Let me ask you too, from your experience with the tourism grants, so let's say we, we decide on one, whether it's three or four, and we say, you know, we're committing to fund this capital account again for 1516 to the tune of 100,000, so you can put in up to a 100,000 request to the tourism board. Is it possible, when Pete takes a look at, a look at these, if the item three comes in truly at only 175, but we are getting, I mean, my question's going to be, are you confined to just do this project, or if there's more funds available, you can split four into four A and four B and do another part? I mean, do we maximize every penny of the?
Well, once a grant is, is complete, that's what you're going to get matching funds for. But I think I understand what you're saying, if the board chose to do option three and it truly came in at 175,000, could then our bid for that project have an alternate for one small part of option four because you have 25,000 extra dollars? The answer to that's yes, we just have to keep it separate from the funding for whatever we apply for a grant.
Okay.
How we bid it and how you do it, you can, you could probably add things, but, but you, you bid it as an ad alternate, but realize that Pete won't have engineered it.
Right, right.
So you won't know that you've got extra money until it's bid.
You, you probably would just want to leave that in your reserves to build on your next year's project.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think you're going to be running into a lot of extras. I mean, just honestly, these are rough estimates and like Tony said, with what they found in the ground and stuff, I don't think there's probably going to be a lot of excess.
But I guess my question also then to follow up, if we're saying we want to support 100,000 for the next year, just like we did this year, would you be then applying for 200,000? Are you going to only apply for 50% of the 175? Or whatever Pete comes back with that estimate? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Are we getting funds to match what we're putting in, or are we getting funds to match just what we think the cost of the project's going to be? Does that make sense?
I would say that you're asking for funds for the cost of the project.
Okay.
And if the board gets, we'll, the, the town will know in January if we've been awarded the grant.
So then we can make our budget decision based on that.
If you want to put 100,000 in, you may have excess, but if you only want to put in what is required to make that matching fund, that is an option that you'll have at that time.
That makes sense. Great, thank you.
Am I, am I getting, I'm getting, am I getting a feeling that we're looking at completing the sidewalks on 158 in, in entirety before we address Bay Drive again? Is that, am I getting that feeling, or?
Well, at the last meeting where we had left it when we were, when we were adopting the budget and establishing the sidewalk fund, we had said that we envisioned making the short-term decisions to continue the efforts on 158 and then take this whole thing after this rush kind of decision timeline after August, once we've given this next part of direction, and then this all moves to the, the subcommittee or the committee to look at, the street and special projects. So then they can provide recommendations back, back to us. I think tonight, we're just trying to, we, I believe we, there was consensus at our last meeting to focus on 158, to provide the direction that they need to move forward submitting the grant application, but then to then take whatever's left and let street improvements and special projects make recommendation back to us. To delve in deeper to what you're asking, tonight, we're, we likely will have three of the four projects related to 158. We will, in essence, commit funds to those, so you're only left with one part of that that will be handed off to streets and special projects. It's going to be their decision, our decision whether you come back? Yes, Meredith, and do you have, or Skip to Bay Drive?
And you're not going to find a, a bigger proponent for Bay Drive than me, but another thing that has to happen with Bay Drive is it needs to come in with the street recommendation because both sections that need to be done are, need to be part of a street and waterline improvement project. So it's more than being able to just put sidewalks down and not having to rework streets and drainage and move water lines and, and things like that. It needs, Bay Drive needs to come in as, as an entire, you know, street project. It would be your fall or spring project to, if, if, you know.
We're talking big, like the num, the numbers we see in parentheses here, right?
Yeah, and if you, right, and if you could, you add the streets to these, it, it becomes a $600,000 project to do phase four.
Right.
So that's, that's a major street project. I mean, rebuilding parts of the street, it's, it's moving drainage, it's moving waterlines to get that path to fit in our 50-foot right of way. So the street subcommittee would make that street recommendation to include the, the phase, whatever phase you want next, and then we would apply for the grant funding and, and, you know, the street subcommittee can coordinate that so that it's prior to a grant fund cycle. I'll also point out that if, if option three is the one that the board chooses, that that will complete the sidewalk on the west side of 158, except for in front of the monument. So that'll be all of, the west side will be complete.
And if, I was just trending out some years here while we're sitting here, you know, if we move forward with this and, and if the commitment, one, there's got to be commitment to funding the account, but then to also applying for the grant funds. Back to your question, you're looking at fiscal year 1718 to basically get back into Bay Drive, actually doing the work, but you're applying in 1617 for that 1718 and then 1819, potentially, if you can, if they can come up with that much money, but that's, those would be the grant cycles that you would be looking at. But they are significant projects and you, you can see just from the, the estimates they've done here, the 100,000 a year that we're putting in, depending on what we're also putting in, street improvement accounts.
Right, because.
Likely not covering.
Right, because the, the grant is potentially 50% of only the sidewalks, not the street improvements that go with it.
Right, it wouldn't be street improvement, but it, it, it's the sidewalks.
Just the sidewalk.
So yeah, so it's the, the 150 of the 600,000. Granted, we've been continuing to fund our street improvement project account, but still, you know, have to look at the totals to see where they fall.
And Meredith, can I ask you one more question? Would there be any kind of substantial savings if we did three and four at the same time?
I'm not able to answer that. I have no idea.
You would save on mobilization costs, for sure. And you would probably, if you did it as a unit price contract like you did this last one, you may get some sort of cost savings there.
I wouldn't pin you down, but you have a number.
They're special on both ends of town, so you, you know, you still.
Yeah.
And to pin a number down for the construction is like trying to say what cost they want to cost tomorrow, it's just so varied.
Does option four have to be grouped the way it is, or could that potentially be broken into?
I think the options were recommended by the town engineer because of their vicinity and the work that was going to be needed to be done in, in those areas. And correct me, Brian or Tony, if I'm, I'm wrong, but I think that he lumped these options together because they work together and they require the same. because they work together and they require the same-
Same type of work, okay.
I'm a proponent of Bay Drive, too, I'm just trying to figure out how long it's gonna take us to get there.
What was it you told us about in the budget with the loan, saving some money? Do you remember?
Oh, to do, oh, I don't know how that, how that's changed now that we've done part of it, but there was initially, it's a figure of, which doesn't make sense right now because it was two million dollars or something to do the sidewalk, was that correct, Meredith? Somewhere around that?
For the whole, the whole town?
For the whole town. Both sides, for the whole town. And then, what I had gotten figures from Beverly that said if we, if we got funding for that and the payment on that, on the loan, depending on what the interest rate would be at the time that it's applied for, would be somewhere between a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars a year. So we could have it all done at one time and then pay that amount of money each year for, I think, fifteen years? I'm not sure.
Well, and if we add up options, one, two, three, and four, it's four hundred and twenty-two thousand, which is a whole lot better than two million, estimate.
Yeah, I'm trying to-
And that's obviously not a hundred percent, but that's-
Back when that two million was out, there was also not the type of sidewalks that we were doing. It was more like the NAGs had sidewalks and-
They were ten-foot wide multi-use paths rather than those sidewalks, five-foot.
Yeah, that's right.
Which is a dramatic cost difference.
You're right. But it would've been less for the, what we're doing.
The only thing with that is typically, Debbie, correct me if I'm wrong, if you're trying to get a multi-year loan like that, you've gotta, you're making a commitment. I'm looking at that, when I listen to that, I'm thinking, well, that's almost another penny, you know, is what we'd have to commit. If you're taking out a fifteen-year note, then we're almost committing to another one cent to do that, to make that annual payment.
Right.
Exactly, whereas, whereas the discussion that you had during your budget work sessions was, this is, the way you've established it now, it's something that you, we will strive to do. You will strive to fund the sidewalk improvement, so that if you do have a year that you can't, then you just don't. With a loan, that's not an option.
Right.
So that, that was, that was my understanding of what the board wanted to see with the reserve fund set up.
Yes.
Right. And then, what we have before is now, I guess the advantage of applying so early with the tourism board, you do the work, you get the estimate, you submit the grant. Before we have to sit down and make our budget decision about truly how much we're funding that account, we know what they've agreed to provide. So then you're, you're only having to put in the fund what's absolutely necessary to keep the grant and do the work versus committing with a hundred thousand, so that's an advantage.
Yeah, in the end, it's all the same money, but what Debbie's point was well made, that we don't have, if we're paying a loan, we're stuck.
Right.
But we can adjust the way we're doing it now based on funding by our-
Availability.
Availability, right.
Yeah. But I think, I mean, to be perfectly honest, looking at where we're sitting, if the board and future boards were willing to continue to commit, you know, a hundred thousand or more each year to funding sidewalks, you're still looking at, at the earliest, I would imagine fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, before you're back to working on Bay Drive. But that's just based on if you were doing one and two this year, three, and I'm just going in order, three and fifteen, sixteen, four and sixteen, seventeen, then that leaves you five, seventeen, eighteen, and six for eighteen, nineteen. Just the way the math works.
Or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Something you recommend after that.
Right. Okay, but it's nice to see it all laid out.
Yes, it is, very nice. You got, it's good work, I think, on this, giving us these options, it's pretty clear.
So does the board have a preference then, and as we're trying to wrap this back up and provide guidance on section, or project three or project four?
Should we just go in order?
I mean, I liked Meredith's point that that does, with the exception of right in front of the monument, it does complete.
I like option three.
Your staff put it in a sort of an order that we would-
Three sounds good to me.
You didn't just throw it up.
I did just see a guy, two shopping bags in hand, right there in front of the fire station today. And I was like, that's kinda close to the road, buddy.
And there's, there's a lot of foot traffic there with food line and the other shops there. I mean, my vote would be for three.
Okay, I'm totally supportive of that.
Sure.
Okay, so in the motion, we can identify number, project three or item three, and then what else needs to be included regarding the amount of funding?
Just simply authorizing the staff to make application for project three for the visitors bureau.
Okay.
And then we'll come back to you as we have additional information.
Great, someone like to make that motion?
I make a motion that we take item number three and authorize the staff to go forward with a grant with the tourism board for the next fiscal year. So fifteen, sixteen.
I second that.
Okay, any other discussion or comments? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Thank you, thank you staff for the work on presenting that. Okay, next is commissioner's agenda.
No, we have item number four.
Oh, thank you very much. Not even reading my own edited version, thank you, sorry, we're still under new business, item number four. This is recommended amendment to chapter one thirteen, general offenses. This is the new addition to tonight's agenda, seaside regulations. And this is to create a new section, section one thirteen point two nine, beach equipment, specifically to prevent obstruction of ocean rescue division line of sight on ocean beaches. Debbie, do you mind providing an introduction to that?
Absolutely not. Yes, ma'am, over the weekend, our ocean rescue division experienced some difficulty with both personal and commercial placement of umbrellas, et cetera, that were hindering our lifeguards from being able to have the line of sight. And as I'm sure you all recall, that's one of the important things that we have on our beach, is one lifeguard can see the other and, you know, so that they see if they need help or whatever. And it's very important that they have that line of sight. And typically, I don't think we've really had any issues where people, you know, you ask them to move, they move. But for some reason, this past weekend, that wasn't the case. And what we'd like to do is actually have an ordinance in place that does help our ocean rescue folks and necessary the police to have them move them either forward or backwards, just so our lifeguards can see each other.
Okay. All right, and if anyone has any questions, Dave Elder's here tonight, so I'm sure he can-
Is there, is there already an ordinance for the, from the lifeguard stand to the water's edge?
Dave, do you mind, in case we have further questions coming up there? That'd be great.
Specifically, from the stand to the water line, I don't know if there specifically is something, but we ask people and they generally comply with that, to keep it, keep the area directly in front of the stand. What this is referring to, as much as anything else, canopies have become inexpensive and they're, they're, they're always out there. And when they start to get closer to the high water line and the distance is further away from the lifeguard stand, there, there's a screening effect. And it's seeing those people at near the high water. We've had some instances in the past, this last year, we had one where a tent kinda popped up out of nowhere. It was a busy day, and suddenly there was a harangue and somebody didn't really get hurt, but we, we couldn't really see where the noise was coming from. And the tents have become more and more of an issue, and our beaches are becoming more and more popular. We've done a really good job at getting people to come here and visit us. So now it's about trying to just help us get people to realize that we need to see them so that when they're in harm's way, we can see that they're in harm's way and help them out.
But I guess, were you alluding to the fact that while we're potentially adding this ordinance, do we also need to add one towards the ocean?
Between the, right.
Because you, we've never had that issue before either, but I guess prior to today, or prior to this weekend, we've never had people, or maybe we have, but they've always been agreeable to move.
Wait, it does, it's guards to the water and up and down the beach.
So it is gonna cover both sides, got it, okay. You got it both ways, great. And Steve, you, you worked with staff, and this has been reviewed from the legal standpoint. Because it's been a lot of work, I mean, we're just Monday, and this was just occurring over the weekend, but-
Yeah, very quickly, and I thank, thank Meredith, and we, we've kind of knocked this around. It's, our beaches are becoming more and more congested, and as we had a super moon this weekend, I don't know if anybody saw it, we had a super tide along with it. So everything was really kind of crammed together. And it just made things a little bit more, punctuation was a little bit more clear. Not really a problem, but there, you know, people get excited.
They have to move their canopy and tent. Okay.
So when you ask somebody to move something, you need to have some teeth in it.
Sometimes, people, people are normally very compliant. However, everybody wants their chunk of real estate and their best seat. And that's where, that's where it becomes a little difficult. We had a, we, we had some issues even just yesterday with, with somebody on this. And my staff does very, very good work. They work really, really good off script. And, and what we try to do is, we try to give them very generalized language, keep the language very conditional, and when they need support, they pass it up the chain. And I'm, I'm there for them. I don't have to call the police very often, and we very rarely do, but this is one of those situations where you kind of realize that we didn't have any, any leverage there. So Meredith and I talked about it, and it seemed like this might be a good fit, not just for rescue vehicles, but also for police, and also for the garbage collection, the service vehicles up and down the beach, early in the morning, late in the day, perhaps.
Any other questions, comments?
No.
If not, then a motion would be in order to approve this recommended amendment.
Do we need the consent agenda?
Consistently, yeah.
Consistently, yeah.
Consent agenda.
Sorry. I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment to chapter one thirteen, general offenses, seaside regulations, to create a new section, section one thirteen dot twenty-nine, beach equipment, to prevent obstruction of ocean rescue division line of sight on ocean beaches.
I second.
Heard it.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Thank you, thank you. And thanks staff again, and Steve for your quick response in this. Okay, now we'll move on to commissioner's agenda, Mr. Middleton?
The fireworks look good, that was nice, the video was really nice as well, so that was nice to have both. Also, I guess you guys have seen the email about the dogs on Martin Street. So I went to Martin Street this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. Let's see, there's two dogs out on Saturday and four dogs on Sunday. So I don't know if we have the manpower to spare on the weekends to just sort of check and maybe, you know, let people know that there's someone there watching for this sort of thing, but, I mean, there is some concerned citizens, so figured we should check it out.
Okay. And I'm guessing, what's, looking at someone who can get in, as far as animal control's response, and did the, did the citizen first call? Do we know animal control, or were they just sending us emails?
Well, I spoke to someone at animal control, and they told me that their ATV was down for a while, and they just got it back, but it's not reliable for the beach. So that's, that's as far as I know.
Okay. And, you know, I'm not sure procedurally, how this, I mean, we've got all the great minds in the, in the room tonight. So if it's, I guess, whose enforcement and responsibility? You know, I was on the beach and saw, we were at Woodmere and saw a dog. Is it the lifeguard, you know, I mean, who is it that, I don't know what procedurally, how we respond, and what's the expectation? I think our lifeguards have so much to do to then try to get them to be policing dogs. But then if you have an ordinance you're not enforcing, this has come up, you know, on several occasions. So thank you guys for all coming to speak on this, because I really don't know procedurally what we're supposed to do, and then what makes sense from that standpoint.
Ten years past and this year, up until our, and as far as our utility vehicle will allow us to go and patrol, normally the lifeguards, if they see a dog, getting hours, they're not supposed to have that on the beach. If they're not busy, there's not a lot of people, they'll normally get down and ask them to take the dog off the beach or, you know, educate them on the hours. And then if they give the lifeguard more time, then they'll call our guys. Or they'll call, central, and central will call our guys to go and respond. And we, we normally do have animal control out on Saturday and Sunday, so it shouldn't be a problem to get somebody out there.
Did you say something?
Yeah, I guess, well, you know, like I, the day that we were out there, I guess it was Saturday, I mean, the beach was packed. It was gorgeous beach day, I mean, it was probably the best day of the year so far. And it was one, one, it was a man with a little dog. And, you know, I can't imagine, like I was thinking of how busy it was and how many people were in the water, that lifeguard having to get off the stand and go deal with the dog issue when you had hundreds of kids in the water. So, you know, I don't know if anyone complained about that dog. I know we're typically complaint-driven, I didn't make a complaint about him. But you all would have to be notified somehow, I guess is the point, because we can't control, we can't put animal control on our beaches, that's just not a good use of resources.
As the beaches get and as they are, it's hard for any of our guys to get out unless they walk out there on the beach. And, you know, if, you know, dogs are a problem, then we're obviously gonna do our job.
So I guess going back to, like what you were saying, when you saw them, and if a citizen's complaining, I guess it's education for our citizens, too, to know that we're, we really can't be policing this. However, we will respond to complaints. And I guess that's probably the best message, because we can't go control all of, you know, patrol all of that. However, if a citizen is seeing it, and they, they have every right, because if they're violating our ordinance, which if they have the dog there during the day, they are, then they should call that in, and then we will respond.
That is correct.
So they would have to call animal control directly?
No.
Or the non-emergency number? Non-emergency.
And then they would dispatch animal control, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
Certainly passed that.
Just wanna make sure we all have the same, the appropriate message, and the one that we can live up to. And saying that we're gonna patrol the beach would not be a message we could live up to. That just isn't a good use of resources. But saying that we will respond if they call and make a complaint, that is something we can live up to. Great, thank you. Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, thanks. That's all for me.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to say that I really enjoyed the fireworks. I thought it was a great show. And I'm glad that our area was not hit very much with author. I know our neighbors to the south were hit pretty significantly, and so feel for them. But glad that our sound side wasn't hit as hard as it could've been.
You're very fortunate. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll mention the sidewalks again, or no, not the sidewalks, I'm sorry, the fireworks. Please. We don't wanna go there. Yeah, ditto on the fireworks, we went over there, we had a good time. And the video was great, John, so thank you very much. I sent it to all my relatives all over the country, so they enjoyed it also. Thank you very much for what you do. And thank all the commissioners for getting it back.
That was the top on my list, was fireworks. I think we all were thinking the same thing as far as what we were gonna share.
Just don't say sidewalks.
That's right, yeah. So a couple items under mayor's agenda. Yes, I'm glad that fireworks are back in Kittle Hills and excited that they're also, we know that they'll be here for next year as well. And hopefully, they'll truly be on the Fourth of July. And hopefully they'll truly be on the Fourth of July and not the Fifth of July, but we certainly made the most of it and that was great. Along those lines, just wanted to say a special thank you to town staff, in particular, the Fire Department and Police Department, and then also Public Works for Post Storm. We did a pickup for debris. But, you know, when that, on, I guess it was Wednesday afternoon, evening-ish, between three and five, when the path of Arthur shifted a little or didn't do what it was supposed to, what we, everyone had thought it was going to do and turn, turn out more and when it shifted west, you know, that was a significant variance to what everybody was predicting up to that point. And so to be able to respond in such a short time, you know, set up a shelter over, you know, in conjunction with the county, but over at the middle school there, but for the Police Department and the Fire Department, the Fire Department to get out and warn our, mostly our visitors on the beach road, it was just a phenomenal response and so appreciated. I got emails from people in Florida and Pennsylvania, a number of emails just thanking us for that response, but also people that weren't even here, but that were just saying, you know, how reassuring it was to have a town that responds so well in an emergency. I went over to the shelter that night, I guess it was about, I don't know, 10:30 or it was before our curfew went into effect. And, you know, talked to a number of the families that were in there. At that time, there were a hundred, about 140 people. We ended up having about 200 people in the shelter that night. And most of them were families with young children. There were a few older adults in there, but they were so grateful to have a place to go that they would feel safe with their families. And so that was just, just a huge thing to, you know, reassure them and how wonderful it was for them to walk about, walk back out the next morning and everything was okay here. Totally different story really in Rodanthie and, and that area. But anyway, just a big shout out, so thanks everyone involved. And again, afterwards, we did have some people, you know, I know on, I guess Bay Drive connecting to First Street, like four or five houses down there, actually was a tree over top of a car, you know, so I mean, there was still some damage and people had a lot of yard debris. Again, nothing like what's down there with the flooding in, in Rodanthie, but it was nice for Public Works and, and that department to come together and do the extra pickup. So I know that really helped our citizens in trying to keep our town in great looking shape, considering, you know, we're right in the, the heat of the season. So thank you all involved. In your packet, also under Mayor's Agenda, there's a resolution. This is a resolution opposing the new EPA regulations that would expand federal control under the Clean Water Act and the information in that packet. The county did adopt a resolution of this sort recently and I bring this before you tonight to consider if we would also like to go on record with adopting a resolution to oppose this. Any questions or comments related to this resolution?
My view would be anything that we can do to help limit the EPA's power would be great.
Okay. Well, I will make a motion then that we approve this resolution opposing the new EPA regulations that would expand federal control under the Clean Water Act.
I'll second.
Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Town manager's agenda?
Nothing this evening.
Town attorney's agenda?
Nothing for you.
Okay, thank you. Consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Two items. The first, minutes from the June 25th, 2014 Board of Commissioners meeting. The second is the North Carolina Division of Archives and History Records Retention and Disposition Schedule for Municipalities. This was developed by the Archives and Records Section of the Department of Cultural Resources in accordance with provisions of Chapter 121 and 132 of the state statute. And basically what this does, this schedule sets out a retention and disposition period for a series of records contained therein as they pertain to North Carolina municipal governments. By adopting this schedule, the town is authorized to dispose of records in a manner that does not exceed the provisions of the schedule. Procedures for disposition include participation by record managers from each of the town departments. The records identified for disposition according to the adopted schedule are examined and confirmed for destruction with a draft list going to the town attorney for approval. A final form is prepared, which cites the records, the date of org, organizations, origination and the authorization for destruction and then executed by the records manager, the department heads, the town clerk and the town attorney. The town has historically taken a caution view of record disposition. Records are examined for historical value and future reference by each department and by the town attorney and determine any anticipated need based on current events. The large guide was provided to the board earlier by email and a link will be established from the meeting agenda and packet selection to the retention and disposition schedule to make it available for public inspection, but would ask this evening for the board to adopt the schedule and approval of the consent agenda as presented.
So moved. I'll second.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this brings us to the second time set aside this evening for public comment. Is there anyone that wishes to speak at this? Yes, Jack.
I have two items I want to talk about. Assuming the finishing the Bay Drive multi-use path does not include canal from First Street down to Bay Drive, but I think, am I correct that way? We're just talking, you're just talking about completing Bay Drive and not that part of the street?
No, it's the whole project. We just, I think informally call it the Bay Drive project, but it is the...
It does include canal?
Yes, sir.
If you have to segment that because of cost, I would do canal first. The canal portion, portion of Bay Drive. You have two bends in there and we quite frequently have parents walking children in, in strollers. I know this because I ride that all the time on my bicycle. And even on a bicycle, I'm very careful around those two bends because I don't know what's coming from the, on the side of the, the road that I'm on. So please keep that in mind when you make your decisions about whether it comes in 17, 18, 19, 20. I would hope that that would be done quickly. Several months ago, I talked about a little problem that was kind of comical. About dog, you know, people collecting dog waste, putting it in the bag and throwing it into our lot there at the corner of, of Cedar and First Street. It's become a real problem now. In fact, I can, think I can correctly put a label there as becoming a dump site. I wouldn't be surprised if there's a ton of yard debris, tree debris, that's been taken in, a little opening off First Street. There's also continuing dump site for dog waste in the bags, which I cannot fathom why people would do that. If they collect it, why would they throw it on the, on the lot? But we're also getting bottles thrown in there and other waste. A tree's fallen across the opening and I put a big branch up there, it kind of makes an X now, but that's not stopping it. And I, I'm at a loss to, to understand what you can do to stop that, but this is not good for our town and it's not good for my private property. Now, I have people, neighbors that are on First Street that can see into the line, they're, they're, they're watching for people that do that. And every time I see a law, a landscape people that are parked around there, I go down and talk to them and they, the two I've talked to, they, they tell me they've never dumped there, but somebody's sure enough dumping debris there. If Public Works could go down and take a look at that and if you folks can think of a way to stop that, I don't know how to stop it. I really don't.
Okay. We can look into that, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this? Yeah, look and skip.
Skip Jones, 1508 Captain's Lane. I've been a big proponent on a couple of these little committees about the sidewalks. I think they've done a phenomenally quick job, it's just incredible. But, and I know you've already kind of, sorry I missed the earlier comment period, but um, I would urge that the area from First Flight to the Dare Center is highly, I mean, people travel there bicycles, walking all the time. And I've taken pictures of people in the middle of the road, you know, there in the rain on a bicycle, just, I mean, it's just scary really. But that one section there, and I'm, and I'm curious if you've got to run the sidewalk all the way through or you connect the existing pavement. I mean, like you said, there's a huge apron in front of the Fire Department. Can that just be connected or is that how they would do it? They would just connect all that pavement? So it seems like it's not a tremendous amount from say First Street to...
That's what this is going to do.
The Dare Center. I mean, it seems like that was broken up a little bit in the, in the two projects.
Actually, I think when we get to response to public comments, Skip, I'm thinking we, that may be in that three. We'll put it back up under response to public comment, but that first, from landing north.
Looked like they stopped at Mako Mikes maybe or something from, I think it was...
There's option two and then there's option three.
Yeah, the combination of two and three. Okay. Can we put that back up when we get to response to public comment? Okay. We'll do that and then get some clarification on exactly where that's going, but it, we may as a combination of two or three address that.
I just think that's a pretty critical area just because there's so much traffic there. And, you know, in the summertime, we get a lot of Europeans and whatnot or just help staying in First Flight and they, I mean, they're walking out there constantly and walking to the Dare Center, you know, for food and whatever else. I think that's a critical area right there.
Okay. Thanks, Skip.
Thanks, Skip.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Okay, okay. Jack, I would like after the meeting, maybe you and Chief and I to talk for a minute about maybe a suggestion to look into your concern, if you don't mind. Okay. If you guys don't mind.
Sure.
We talk about that. Okay, great. Then Skip, let's move on to Skip and if we can put the map back up and look at exactly what was approved and what that covers.
And what was approved was one and two being done this year, which includes up to Mako Mikes and then three, which extends it from Mako Mikes through the Dare Center. The reason that was broken up is because from Mako Mikes to the Dare Center is an enormous drainage and utility project. And we can't do it this year with the money that's been put into the Capital Reserve Fund for 2014, 15, and that's why it wasn't combined. But we did want to try to get from the Lowes to Mako Mikes in this year, which will get you from First Flight to Mako Mikes. And then next year, you've authorized us to apply for a grant from that point through Third Street. And it is estimated to be about $175,000 project just from Mako Mikes to Third Street because of the drainage and utility conflicts that we're going to run into there.
Okay.
So option two gets you the, the sidewalk in front of the empty lot next to Lowes and then from First Street up to Mako Mikes.
Yeah, if we can show it on the map, that, that would be great. Thank you, Meredith.
Option two and option three.
Sure, yeah. If you have a question on that.
Look at that map. I mean, to me, that's showing all the way across in front of Dare Center, but once somebody gets to the Dare Center, I mean, they can use their parking lot to walk to Third Street. So all, I mean, all that sidewalk in front of Dare Center to me is not nearly as critical as for those two neighborhoods getting to the Dare Center, whether you're over on the Third Street side or you're on the First Street side, First and Second Street, whatever. See what I'm saying? It's, that whole stretch in front of Dare Center to me is, most of the traffic seems to be going to the Dare Center, in my opinion.
The Third Street side is done and option two is slated, which is from Lowes to Mako Mikes is slated, the board just authorized that to be done this year.
So there's, so what I'm saying is, there's not a whole lot left between Mako Mikes and because of the aprons and whatnot and even the parking lot of Mako Mikes.
Oh, you're talking just giving from KH.
It's not a whole lot left between there and Dare Center.
There's a sidewalk out there.
Sorry?
Right, Mako Mikes has a sidewalk.
Mako Mikes has a sidewalk already.
Who does?
Mako Mikes. Is that right?
The restaurant.
Yes.
Has a sidewalk.
So then that's getting you to the...
Firehouse.
So are you saying just to do the bit in front of the firehouse?
Well, the firehouse obviously only got an apron, so it just, it's nothing from there to Dare Center, is what I'm surmising. I mean, I'm just going by memory basically, but from the fire department into the parking lot.
He's suggesting doing this right here.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's pretty much...
Yeah, that, in front of that ATM right there.
It seems like that would be an easy thing to add to option two. And then you're tying in...
There's a big, big ditch there.
Bickety Canal's right there, that's going to have to be bridged, I guess. And then that's a tough section to try to get. That's usually where you see people coming into that south entrance to Dare Center. I mean, they'd be in the middle of the road in the rain on a bicycle, traffic just buzzing, it's crazy. Or they got to go out around there, anyway.
Yeah, and it, and it would be nice if they would, if they would use the parking lot once they get past that one section, but they don't seem to. I mean, even today, there was someone just kind of weaving on the side of the road as I'm coming, coming home from work, so. I'm fine.
Okay. Okay. Um, that's all we have this evening. If anyone has anything else, we're good. That's, what's in front of you is the final budget that was adopted. So you might wonder why we have this, but it's because there, since there were some changes in what was presented to us, each year, once we adopt a budget, we get the final.
So this is the official, real...
This is what we live by. This is the official for the whole next year. This is the guidebook, yes.
The red one's gone.
Yeah, you can shred the red.
Okay.
Shred the red.
Add, that came out, great, but it wasn't intended. Anyway, okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Anything else? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all for being with us tonight. Have a good evening.